I'm not going, same here.
I'm not going to it.
I, I called, yeah, Cindy called me, so I couldn't.
You might.
But I told you that you were planning on going, right?
We're going, I bought a table.
Yeah.
I have a.
Gotcha. My husband's right behind you too, Marcy, I'm sorry. I'm winking at you though, Marcy, not him.
Yeah, oh, did, did you make? Okay, could you understand my note? You didn't want to be in line. Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here. Approval of the city council minutes?
Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. And adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt.
We need to move, uh.
Okay.
Uh, move items, uh, uh, nine, one. Yeah, eight point one and eight point two, I'm sorry. From first reading to first and second readings.
Seven point one and seven point two.
Eight, eight one and two is our second reading.
Yeah, seven point one is seven point two.
Oh, seven point one?
That's public hearing. We need to have the one that's.
Right.
Yeah, she's right, it, it's later.
I have seven point one, seven point two of public hearings.
Yes. What'd you say, what'd you say Barb?
Yeah.
Six point one is the proclamations and the.
Right.
An amendment came out to this a couple days ago. That's the first version maybe.
So, seven point one, seven point two.
This is.
Yeah, mine is today, but there was an email that came through that said that this is the amended version.
Okay.
Yeah, seven point one, seven point two, the public hearing for the, uh, ambulance.
Uh huh.
And the, uh, driveway ordinance, uh, need to move to, uh, uh, first and second reading.
Okay. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Alright, alright, so we got two proclamations tonight, a proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas across the nation, February is recognized as Black History Month, and in 1976, the designation was firmly adopted to honor and affirm its importance. It is important to recognize the positive contributions to our community made by Black Americans. And whereas for the determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance of members of this community, there have been valuable and lasting contributions in schools, churches, social and economic institutions, and homes. And whereas throughout our nation's history, Black Americans have honorably answered the nation's call to serve in our armed forces. And whereas Black History Month should involve youth, as well as adults of all ethnic groups, and foster a spirit of cooperation and mutual respect among all of the multi-ethnic communities. And whereas during this month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the past's success and injustices, look to the future, and continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideas of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Brian Jacobs, Mayor of Warrensburg, Missouri, along with other members of the Warrensburg City Council, urge all of our citizens to work towards creating a community in which Black Americans are respected and recognized for their past presence and future contributions to our community, the state, country, and the world. Day of this day, 12th February, 2018. Thank you. No problem. And then the next one we have is for American, American History Month. Big crowd for the thank you. They're all here for you. Since we're done, all gonna leave. American History Month proclamation. Whereas the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution sponsors February as American History Month each year. Whereas to stimulate and knowledge of both young and old, and a sense of pride in our nation's great achievements and dedication to liberty. And whereas to stress pride in the United States of America through community services and educational programs, essay contests, and historical tours. And whereas through the study of American history, we are made aware of the importance of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity in all our lives today. And whereas the importance of always remembering American history should be noted. Now therefore, I, Brian Jacobs, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, along with the other members of the Warrensburg City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2018 to be American History Month in Warrensburg, Missouri, and urge all Warrensburg residents to join with me this month to recognize the importance of American history in our lives. In witness hereof, I hereon too, set my hand and seal this 12th day of February 2018.
As DA all do, I will thank.
There you go. Let's see here, so audit report.
Members of the City Council, um, the city's auditors taking in and completed the fiscal year 2017 audit. You have a copy of that before you, uh, and you have John Cummings here tonight will take in to, uh, discuss the audit.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Cummings, I'm an Audit Services shareholder with KPM, out of Springfield. I'll be going over the audit report for the year ended September 30, 2017. We're gonna start on page four, the bound booklet. And, uh, I had a whole thing planned about how my repert, reputation preceded me, and I want to thank everybody for coming out for supporting the audit and all of that, but it turns out that they're here for the American History Presentations. It's very disappointing. On page four, you'll find the independent auditor's report. I'm gonna try and keep this brief because I know you have a long agenda and a lot of things to talk about. Page four talks about management's responsibility for the financial statements. A lot of people don't understand that the city has to accept responsibility for their financial statements. It's not the auditor that has to accept that responsibility. Our responsibility is to say whether or not they were stated in accordance with standards. And, uh, that's basically the next section, auditor's responsibilities. On the next page is the opinions paragraph, and that's the most important paragraph in this particular letter. Because that's where we tell you how you did on your financial statements. The city has received an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, that is the best possible result, and the same as last year. So, good job on that. Wanted to cover just for a brief few minutes here maybe, uh, some of the financial information about the city. We're gonna turn over to page 24. It is the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance for Governmental Funds. And what. With governmental funds, that's the general fund, the park fund, the tricentennial fund, the capital improvement transportation, sales tax fund, the capital improvement half cent sales tax fund, the debt service fund, the neighborhood improvement fund, tax increment financing fund, and a new one, the capital improvement bond fund. In your general fund, you had total revenues of eight million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars. That's up about twenty-two thousand compared to last year. On the park fund, total revenues were two million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred eighty dollars, which is down about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand compared to last year. Tricentennial fund had revenues of a hundred and forty-one dollars in interest. The capital improvement transportation fund had total revenues of seven hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars, which is down about seventeen thousand compared to last year. The capital improvement half cent fund was. One million, seven hundred eight thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars, which is down about fifty-seven thousand compared to last year. The debt service fund had revenues of eight thousand, ninety-three dollars, which is down about a hundred and sixty-four thousand compared to last year. The school actually made a big payment last year. Yeah, a hundred and fifty thousand, that's pretty much the differential there. The neighborhood improvement fund had total revenues of sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred seven dollars, which is up about nine thousand compared to last year. Tax increment financing fund had revenues of thirty-four thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars, which is up about thirty-two thousand compared to last year. And the capital projects fund, or the capital improvement bond fund, had, uh, revenues of thirty-eight hundred and thirteen dollars, and that's new revenue for the year. Overall, you had total revenues of thirteen million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars, which is down about three hundred eleven thousand compared to last year. The city had something kind of strange, and all cities actually had it, and that is the state changed their software they use to process sales tax returns. And that also changed how they sent those sales taxes they collected from businesses out. And I think in December, uh, the city got an adjustment on the sales taxes. And so I think that might be where a little bit of this decrease in revenue is coming from, because there really was no other reason for city sales taxes to have been down. So I think really what's happening is that the timing has shifted a little bit with the state, and that's caused a little bit of a change in timing and thus a small change in the revenue for the year. On the expenditure side, the general fund had total expenditures of ten million, five hundred thirty thousand, five hundred one dollars. That's up, uh, one point six four million compared to last year. That is primarily due to purchasing some equipment on lease purchase and also beginning the process of purchasing the fire trucks. So, uh, on the park fund, you had total expenditures of two million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand, fifty dollars. That's up a hundred and twenty-eight thousand compared to last year. The capital improvement transportation fund had total expenditures of eight hundred, ten thousand, four hundred seven dollars, which is down about seventy-nine thousand compared to last year. The capital improvement half cent fund had total expenditures of two hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars, which is down a hundred and twenty-seven thousand compared to last year. Debt service expenditures were one million, eight hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars, which is up about a hundred and forty-eight thousand compared to last year. Neighborhood improvement fund had total expenditures of two hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars. That's down about three thousand compared to last year. Tax increment financing fund had total expenditures of thirty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars, which is up about thirty-two thousand compared to last year. And you had capital improvements, uh, expenditures out of your bond funds of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. So, a lot of activity in the city this year. I think that's the short version of what I just read off to you auctioneer style in numbers. If you turn the page, uh, it'll show you, uh, by those same funds, uh, the net effect of all of that on your fund balances. After non-operating items, the general fund had a decrease of four hundred thirty-six thousand, five dollars, and ended the year at five million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars. The park fund, after, uh, other financing sources and uses, uh, had a decrease of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars, and ended the year at nine hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars. The tricentennial fund was up a hundred and forty-one dollars, ended at fourteen thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. The capital improvement transportation fund decreased for the year by sixty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars, and ended the year at four hundred forty-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars. Capital improvement half cent fund decreased by a hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars, and ended the year at five hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. In the debt service fund, you had an increase of twenty-six hundred and seventy dollars, and ended the year at seven hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. The neighborhood improvement fund decreased by a hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars, and ended at five hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars. The tax increment financing fund was up a hundred and forty-eight dollars, and that was the balance at the end of the year. And your capital improvement bond fund increased by five million, seven hundred three dollars, seven hundred twenty-six dollars. There was no beginning balance because this was a new fund, so that is also your ending balance. So, uh, overall, uh, a very active financial year for the city. Seems like a lot of good things going on. Any questions on those? I went rather fast. If there are no questions tonight, and you happen to go, wow, you went through that really fast, and you have questions, get with Matthew, he has my cellphone number. You're welcome to give me a call, and I can answer any questions that you might have at a later time when there's not a whole lot of people waiting to go on next. If you want to turn over to, uh, page 29 in the booklet, just a few more numbers, then we'll move on to the recommendations, and then I'll get out of everybody. This is the Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position for the proprietary funds, which are your sewer fund and new internal service fund for self-insurance. The total operating revenues for your sewer fund were four million, two hundred forty thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, which is up about a hundred and twenty thousand compared to last year. The operating expenses were three million, three hundred two thousand, four hundred fifty dollars, which is up about two hundred and forty-one thousand compared to last year. They gave you an operating income of four hundred, or nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars. You had non-operating, uh, net expense for, uh, combination of interest income versus interest expense. Expense net of two hundred fifty-three, or two hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars. You had a transfer out of six hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars, and that left a net income to the fund of sixty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars, and gave you an ending balance of fifteen million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. So, overall, pretty good year in the sewer. The internal service fund is a new fund for this year. The city's switched to a cost-plus hybrid system as it's transitioning over to self-funded insurance. And so, this is a fund that's set aside to build the balance to the appropriate level so that you can go self-insurance, and hopefully, in theory, save the city money on employee health insurance. During the year, you had premiums received into this fund of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars, and you had expenses of insurance claims, premiums, and administrative fees totaling six hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. And you had interest income of twenty-six hundred and five dollars, and that left an increase for the year of three hundred forty-nine thousand, twenty-three dollars. So you're, I would say roughly a third of the way to where you need to be to be self-insured. Any questions on that page? If not, we'll kind of flip over. There should have been two letters at the back of your bound report. We're gonna talk about the one that starts with federal grant compliance. The other letter is a letter that's required from us auditors to those charged with governance, which is you all. And, uh, you can read that when you have time. It kind of runs through some, uh, various points about the audit, the kind of entries we made, whether or not we had any disagreements with management. Uh, I'll spoil it for you, there weren't any. Everybody was very, very cooperative, very helpful, and we certainly appreciate that. On the recommendation letter, uh, the first item is federal grant compliance. And for those of you that are not aware, uh, the Single Audit Act and all of the cost circulars that are related to that on federal grants got rolled into what is now called Uniform Guidance. And as part of that, they required that pretty much all of your policies relating to handling federal funds, federal grants, be in writing and include certain elements. And it was pretty vague, there was a lot of opinions out there and a lot of back and forth. What we're recommending here is that you go back through with the most recent guidance, make sure that your policies are covering all of those different elements like you think they are. Part of your audit, uh, does cover looking at grant revenue and expense, uh, at this level, but we don't get too much into those policies in a financial statement audit unless there is a single audit. There's a single audit that's triggered when you spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal dollars, and you didn't do that this year. So we haven't been into what your most current detailed policies are relating to grant administration on federal funds. So, would recommend that you take a look at what the most recent guidance is out there and make sure that the policies are conforming to that, so that when you do have some big federal grants, you're all good. Next item is, uh, bank depository agreements. And as a custodian of public monies, we believe the city should review certain elements of the depository agreements with banking institutions so that proper controls are in place. A lot of times what happens at banking institutions is they don't really want to follow what your policy is relating to things like signatures, or who can open or close accounts, uh, who can wire funds. So you want to be sure that those depository agreements, that contract between the city and the bank, are covering the city the way that they should be, so that the city's policies are backed up by that agreement. So, it's a good, good idea to review those periodically. Sometimes, uh, banks have been known to send out, I don't, I'm not gonna say your bank would, but I have known of cases where banks just sent out an update to the depository agreement, and it went into effect unless it was specifically rejected. So, uh, it's a good idea to take a look at what the most recent depository agreement is, and make sure that it's covering you on, uh, the amount, the number of signatures, whose signatures they are on checks, who can make wire transfers, who can open and close accounts. It's pretty important stuff. The next item is internal audit procedures. And, uh, the city has gone through a pretty big transition in the accounting department over the last few years, but I think everybody's getting settled in to their job function well enough that, uh, there should be a comfort level that's great enough to go out to the various places where there's cash collection points at the city and do things like countdown drawers, and make sure that the policies of the city are being followed outside of the business office. And so, uh, we would recommend that, uh, you put together some procedures to go out and make sure that the controls are being followed outside of city hall, uh, facilities, and make sure that everybody's, uh, up to speed on what they should be doing and everything's being done properly. We can catch some things as auditors, we're here about a week, and, uh, while everybody else is here all the time. And so your chances of being able to, uh, pop in and surprise somebody are a little bit greater, and a surprise test is always better than a predicted test. So, um, with that, I'll move on to segregation duties and a little bit of good news to close out the night. Kind of on the same vein as controls. Last year, we noted that, uh, the city didn't really have adequate segregation duties within the various accounting functions. So the accounting transaction cycle wasn't really split up, uh, like us auditors really like it to be. People had access to multiple phases of that transaction cycle. The city has done a good job of separating out those functions, and there's very little overlap in function now. And, uh, really, you've done a pretty good job of sorting that whole situation out so that the points where there are some overlap, there's also mitigating controls. So we wanted to commend the city for implementing new processes and adjusting job duties to improve the segregation of duties in the accounting transaction cycle. And, uh, very few cities actually get this particular commendation, so you should feel very good about that. Any questions? You were quite a bunch tonight.
Yeah. Your, uh, your processes, uh, Matthew, in the segregation of duties that you've instituted, uh, the surprise audits, uh, on-the-spot audits, follow the suggestion?
We do not have the procedures written up yet, but that will be coming forward, and we will be going surprise audits this year.
Thank you.
Well, if there are no questions, I want to thank you all for the time tonight. And if you have questions, again, feel free to give me a call, email me, I'm very available. So, happy to help out and answer any questions you might have, and I'll let you get on with your night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the public hearings. Public hearing for conditional use permit for the ambulance service in the general business district.
This is a request that's come forward from Johnson County Ambulance District. As many of you are probably aware, they purchased property a few years ago on the south side of Young Street. The future address of that property is anticipated to be 500 East Young Street, so on the south side of the property. The request is to operate an ambulance service that is a conditional use in all doming districts within Warrensburg, and so that includes the general business district that it's located in. The planning and zoning commission meeting discussed it at length last week and did recommend approval. We had, uh, a discussion about a couple different things, including, uh, traffic, the merging of ambulances into traffic as in that area, it's a heavy, um, traffic flow in that area, and I think they're prepared to speak a little bit on that this evening. I know they're here, um, with a presentation of their own to make. The, ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval with granting authority to staff to approve the final site plan. What you have in your packet and what they had is a preliminary site plan that's been prepared. They're still working on the final details of, of all of their plans, and so they would consider that preliminary in case something would need to change as it comes through the building permit review process, which it has not gone through that at this point. So, the ordinance has been drafted to, uh, include that condition. One thing we've noted in the staff report is that there is a discussion, uh, about the width of the driveway entrance. They're showing it at sixty feet wide, and our code, uh, maximum width that allows in chapter 20 is forty feet wide. And, and so I think, um, so I'm in the, uh, have had discussions about that, would like to, to update you all on that as well. The ambulance dealers, you have questions for them, or have they done the presentation?
Well, thank you all very much. My name's Shane Lockard, I'm the chief of the Johnson County Ambulance District, and, uh, this has been a project that we've been looking for property for a number of years. With the primary motivation intent is we're surrounding a training facility. This particular building will serve as an administrative headquarters, training facility, and the ambulance facility, which, uh, currently serves the northern, um, majority portion of Warrensburg. So our administrative and training office that's on South 13 currently would move to this site. And then the ambulance crew, the 24-hour and 12-hour staffed ambulance over on Corporate Drive would also move to be housed in this site, and we have some, uh, ideas of repurposing that facility, uh, down the road. The training center would include, uh, a classroom to accommodate 20 students, a large classroom accommodating over 40, and five skill stations. Has a five-drive-through ambulance bays that could house up to 10 vehicles. We probably won't have 10 there all the time, as we'd like to have some drive-through bays for our ambulances. Our benefits is, our headquarters is aging, and, you know, the cost of maintenance and overhaul outways. It's, we've been looking for a new facility. We believe we can improve, uh, response times because currently that Corporate Drive, uh, location, is a little far away from where the vast majority of the ambulance calls occur in the city of Warrensburg, and this facility location is extraordinarily beneficial to us. We want to expand our public safety for EMS. Ultimately, we are looking to bring paramedic certification to the city of Warrensburg. Currently, I send paramedics to either, uh, Columbia or into Independence and Kansas City. We provide the EMT level, but I'd like to see paramedics homegrown right here in town. We're always looking to improve the comfort and functionality of our EMS crews. The Corporate Drive facility is extremely small for the number of people we have housed there. And then we're allowing, uh, for housing of all of our vehicles, ambulance, and equipment, so we can stop parking some of our, uh, apparatus outside. We'll have facilities now, they won't all be at that facility, but they will have room somewhere to be housed indoors. As Barb highlighted, um, we've been working very closely with the city. It's been, uh, very easy to work with the city, working out the different processes. The one area that we are gonna continue to seek for is, uh, an exception to the sixty, for our 60-foot, uh, driveway. Working with our engineers, looking at the ambulance, um, you know, the, this is a commercial, uh, code for the 40-foot. Ambulances that we currently run are not the smallest vehicles out there. They're not as large as a fire truck, uh, but they are long, and for us to be able to exit the driveway, and I included some of the drawings, they're not in exact detail, but we've worked directly with our engineers on the turn radius and feel like we can accomplish it with the 60-foot drive opening. It's not impossible to do with the. It's not impossible to do with the 40. I don't want to mislead you. It's not convenient and it requires maneuvering of the ambulances in a way that would slow our response and just, to be honest, be a nuisance in a repetitive driving in and out If the timeline moves, we're down to finishing bid documents. I mean, we're down to the color of outlets and, you know, door hardware talk at this point. We could be advertising bids in March. Site work could begin in May, and that would put us on track for around a May 2019 completion date. Probably not a move-in date, but at least that would be the day that the contractors could walk away and hand the building to us. So we're just presenting our project for approval by the city for the land and use permit, and we're also seeking that exception under the city code for a 60-foot driveway at the ambulance side entrance, not the public and administrative entrance side. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
With the additional traffic there, how do you anticipate marking it as ambulance only on that side?
We had a discussion in the early planning stages of putting up appropriate signage, and we had that discussion with Barb and her staff, probably on each side of it. Second, it's going to be extraordinarily obvious what it is, just like a fire station. And we can also put the signage right on the bay doors that will do that. We do have an entrance there at the front because people do seek care from us instead of driving to the hospital or calling 911. It does happen in town, out of town. And so we actually left a little bit of room in case somebody in an emergency situation drove to us, they can't access our building from the front. We'll have both a telephone and a buzzer system to do that. So it's not impossible for them to pull in, but we'll sign it that way that they understand that's an emergency exit. Our ambulances do intend to enter that way, drive around the building, and drive through. Speak to anybody in emergency services, and if we can minimize the amount of times that we have to back apparatus, we improve dinging up our trucks. And we are slated to meet at the Traffic Commission to review and talk about some of the concerns that the Planning and Zoning Commission brought up and just make sure that we're all on the same page and find out any recommendations they have. So.
Will you have anybody sign up for the public portion of that? All right, we'll close that portion. All right, let's see here. Next one is public hearing for an ordinance amending driveway requirements. A public hearing on an ordinance amending Section 27-404 and establishing Section 27-405 of the Code of City Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding residential driveways.
The discussion began with Planning and Zoning Commission in December to take a look at an ordinance they had passed originally in May of 2016. And the intent of that ordinance, and you have that text in your packet, but the intent of that ordinance was to allow one lane of a driveway to not end at either a garage or a carport. Your current driveway ordinances require that, well, prior to May of 2016, required that you have a garage-driveway combo and that all lanes of that driveway lead to either a garage or a carport. The intent of May of 2016 was to change that so that one lane did not have to terminate in a garage or a carport. And several permits were issued along that, along those lines after that ordinance was passed. It came to our attention through legal counsel at the end of last year that the language in that ordinance might not have gotten us over the finish line. And so new language has been provided, and that is what you see in the first section of 27-404G. In the discussion of that at the staff level, which was then brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission level, was a desire to try to accommodate lots and structures, houses that were built prior to garages really becoming common. And we have many of those properties, lots that were plotted over 100 years ago and built over 100 years ago. On the west side of town, it's pretty much through the development of Warrensburg up through the Broadview area, you see that there as well. You have carports there, but you don't have a lot of garages in the first beginning phases of Broadview. And so for those properties to allow them to continue to be used and to be remodeled and rehabbed over the years, to allow them to have a driveway that is at least one lane, one driveway lane, if that's all there is that doesn't go to anything. So it would just be a driveway into grass or to the wall of carports that's been converted into a living room or a bedroom or something that was converted years ago prior to the current owner's purchase even of the property. So that is what Section 27-405 does. Staff is recommending approval, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting last week.
So the ones at Onsandra Drive, they have the, behind our wood, I've got one of them at 1304, there's a driveway that goes to the grass and then there's one that goes to garage.
Right, so there's a garage and a lane that goes to the garage and then a wing out that goes to nothing. This ordinance would allow that.
Because, I mean, it's already there.
Yes.
They were already built. So new construction also?
That 27-404G would apply to new construction, yes. New or existing either.
And nobody signed up for the public hearing on that one? So we'll close that one. Next one is a public hearing on an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as Missouri Route 13, Highway Right-of-Way north of Highway 50 and approximately 1,850 feet south of the Highway 13 and Northeast 200 Road Northeast HH Highway intersection.
For several months, we've been working to get to the point where we could annex the Highway Right-of-Way adjacent to the Dollar Tree property. This is that ordinance and public hearing. MoDOT received the letter that you all authorized to be sent in early December. They've received that document and reviewed it, and at the beginning of January returned to the city a signed petition stating that they would like to voluntarily annex their right-of-way into the city of Warrensburg. And so we've advertised tonight's public hearing along those lines. We would have the public hearing tonight and consider it for first reading only and then wait the 14-day public comment period to see. To date, I've not received a public comment on the annexation.
Anybody got any questions on that one? Somebody signed up for it. All right. All right, we're going to close that one. And the next one is a public hearing on an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Highway 13, Highway, and the extension of Veterans Road.
Staff has received the voluntary annexation petition from Oil Investments, Inc., LLC, represented by Weldon Brady. And he is here this evening if you have questions of him. This is a little over eight acres at the southeast corner of what would be the extension of Veterans Road across Highway 13. Also, on your agenda is Phase II Veterans Road, if you've heard it referred to that way. This property has been requested to be annexed into the city. If the annexation of the highway is successful, then it would be contiguous to the city and appropriate to consider it for first reading as well.
All right, let's see, we have a few people signed up for that one. Did anybody have any questions for Barb? First person is Mark Ferris of 1834 Veterans Road, Warrensburg, Missouri.
Good evening. Somebody want to go first, but here I am. So I'm a resident of Cahill, been so for about three years. So my concerns tonight are actually for this and measured a couple later. But so we moved to Cahill, you know, we did a lot of investigating and looked at a lot of different communities and houses in the area before settling in Cahill. And what drew us to Cahill was that it sort of seemed like an ideal mix where there was, you know, a lot of young families, really nice neighborhood, seemed very safe, had a lot of seemingly untouched areas around it, so mostly, you know, pastureland. So had that kind of nice mix for us and our young family. So, you know, my concern with the projects moving forward and putting in a gas station, service station in that area, I feel is a kind of direct conflict with sort of maintaining the culture that's been established in that area. And also potentially has some hazards in terms of safety and health as well. In doing some research, I found that there were notable statistics indicate that in close proximity to service stations, there is increases in case of childhood leukemia. There's also the potential for children to develop Hodgkin's lymphoma. So those are just a few of the potential health threats associated with persons being located in such close proximity to service stations. Service stations also sort of fall categorically under what is a toxic release inventory, which again, some of the effects linked to that is a higher likelihood of children maintaining brain cancer later in their lives. Also, there has been significant research done on behalf of the John Hopkins School of Public Health, which indicates that even small bits of runoff from gas stations, service stations, especially those that have a fairly high volume as a retailer, as one proposed in this measure, that there are significant links to contaminants being released into the water supply, different carcinogens, plus notably benzene. So again, there are potential long-term health repercussions of those things. My concern also, as a homeowner, as a member of that community, is the ramifications that would have upon the property values themselves. So even if maybe there's not significant statistical data to indicate that there is, you know, a potential rise in theft or burglary, those kind of things, the perception is very real amongst people that live in those areas, and that would adversely affect resale values for homeowners as a perception for anyone coming into that area would be concerned about fire risks, increased risk of robbery, burglary, theft, those kind of things as well. So I think there are a lot of very real potential threats, and so I would implore you guys to consider these and to vote against this measure. Thank you.
Jay Birchfield, 302 Campus View Drive.
Yeah, I should have had my glasses on. I was intending to do the sign.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
I think, did you already sign up on the other one then?
No.
Make sure I call you again, so.
Okay.
All right. Let's see here. John, I can't tell if it's S-K-L-E-S or?
Same, I'm P.I.S.
Okay, so just be sure to sign up on the other one so we make sure we call you then. I got a Wilson, but it looks like the person didn't, Wilson Birch?
Didn't run out of ink.
Okay.
Same.
Same, all right. All right, and then, let's see here, Heather?
Kai's mom. I should know how to say your name, I'm sorry.
I thought I was signing in.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, then that's everybody that signed up for that.
Okay.
I'm sorry about the last name there, but the writing was a little hard there. All right, well, we'll close that one. Let's see here. A public hearing on an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at northeast corner intersection of Missouri Route 13, Highway, and Highway 50.
This is property that's approximately 69 acres, a little over 69 acres, owned by the Brady Commerce Park LLC, which is represented by Weldon Brady, again, is here this evening if you have questions of him. This is property that, similar to the last one, was identified in both the 2007 and the 2017 Conference of City plans and future land use maps as a future office park, business park, light industrial area. And so the annexation petition has come forward from the owner to come into the city of Warrensburg to facilitate the future development of an industrial park.
Anybody have any questions? Did the doctor want to say anything, or? If you wanted to speak, you can. If you don't, then.
I was going to wait till the ordinance came out, but anyway. Tonight, then two weeks from tonight, on February 26, you will consider our petition for the final phase of our annexation process that we've been going through. This will fulfill our commitment to the Dollar Tree to cooperate and facilitate their ability to be annexed into the city. With your acceptance of our annexation, you will then be able to proceed with the annexation of the Dollar Tree tract. We're in support of the annexation application as presented, and furthermore, we are in agreement with the staff's sensible zoning designation. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
And nobody signed up to speak on that one, so we'll close that. Somebody at this meeting is going to show me how to set that timer or it doesn't.
Yeah.
All right, and then let's see here. Okay, a public hearing on an ordinance amending Section 27-504 of the city, or the Code of City Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding sign requirement permits.
Staff has brought forward the attached ordinance which amends your existing regulations for pole signs in the area of highway interchanges. So this would apply at the intersection of two federal highways or the combination of a federal and a state highway excluding business routes. So it doesn't count on Business 50, Business 13, any type of business route. In the event that you are at the interchange of two such routes, then the ordinance provides a new Section 27-504, little E, little 2, F, which allows pole signs within a certain distance of the interchange of the right-of-way and of each other to be larger than the current height requirement of 30 feet. So it would allow pole signs to extend, as written, to 90 feet in height. With this ordinance, there are some additional performance requirements for signs that would be at the additional height, anywhere between 31 to 90 feet in height. It does require that they be within a certain distance of the interchange, within 2,800 feet of the interchange, requires that they be billed to, so a billed-to line as opposed to your standard setback line, there's a billed-to line of 400 feet so that they have to be close to the highway and not further back from it than 400 feet, that they be oriented to be read from the road, and that they have a maximum surface area of 700 square feet. There are some illumination standards that have been provided so that they are not illuminating the ground below them or properties adjacent to them that the illumination would be at the sign face and not at the ground level. And then that there be a distance between these types of signs of at least 1,400 feet. There could be a linear distance greater than that, but the minimum would be 1,400 feet. I think that's the highlights of the ordinance. The entire section of 27-504E was restated in its entirety because the original passed last year included an error, a numbering error, and so as not to inadvertently delete any of the existing ordinance and codification, we've restated the whole section there. The only new language is that, which is in bold. The only new language is that which is in bold print. Are you happy to answer questions?
On the orientation of the sign, it just states it needs to be viewable from the right-of-way. Does it have to be facing or perpendicular parallel, it doesn't matter as long as it's viewable? Or is that specifically addressed, in your opinion?
You could be more specific if you wanted to be, yes.
I mean...
This is the language that we took from the state.
Yeah, and I'm assuming it's meant to be vague so that you could orient it whichever direction you wanted. Obviously, if you put it at the back of the property, you want it parallel with the road. If you put it closer, you may choose to have it so when you're driving by, it's a right or left-hand read. If that's the intent, I think it's fine, but if you're wanting it to be a certain way, we might be more specific. What was the intent? Just keep it open up to the property owner?
I believe the intent was to make it perpendicular to the right-of-way it's adjacent to. And so, it could be vague in that sense, yes, I'd agree with that.
But do you think the intent was to have it perpendicular to where you see it as you're driving on the road?
Yes.
I guess my question would be, so it's an intersection of two highways, which right-of-way are we referring to? So we have the intersection of 50 and 13.
But it's adjacent to 13 right-of-way. Unless it's right at the corner, it's going to be adjacent to one or the other.
In the instance we're talking about specifically, but what we've written applies to more than just the specific piece of property.
Yes.
And so, if you run into a situation that they're right up next, adjacent to Highway 50 and Highway 13, that language is not clearly identified which right-of-way it needs to be visible to. So do we leave that to the property owner to decide whether they want to move more visible with 13 or 50, or do we need to put something in the code that outlines that more clearly?
Because of the geometric requirements, you're going to have some areas where there's overlap as to which roadway it would be perpendicular to. So having it in this fashion accommodates the fact that where there is an intersection, you're going to have a zone where it could face either direction and leave some decision to be made by the property owner as to which roadway is the focus of the sign.
The lighting requirements would remain the same as far as the aiming of any fixtures and the illumination factors, regardless of the orientation of the sign though.
Yes. Yes.
I think in planning and zoning, it was brought up at the five candlelights is half of a streetlight, if I understood it, the planning and zoning. A candlelight was 10.
I was, I didn't hear that at PNZ. That was stated, it was amongst commissioners, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I think the...
I thought Jeff said something about it.
Yeah, I think what he was referring to was the illumination requirement for a parking lot.
Okay.
Rather than a single emitter. He was talking about the requirement for foot candles at a parking lot.
Alright, but that's 10?
Yeah.
Okay, so the sign is half of that, okay.
Let me begin the gentleman that mistakenly signed up for the wrong public hearing before are here representing the development, and they're probably the most educated answer what they wanted to accomplish with the sign because they were initially the ones that requested the ordinance be changed, it only be before you tonight if they hadn't made the request. So it might be good to provide them some time to talk about what their intent is with signage and what they would like to accomplish that might help answer some of your questions.
Okay.
And you can determine whether the code appropriately addresses that and to meet the needs of what the community would like to have happen and not happen.
That's John here?
Jay.
Oh, Jay. Okay. Oh, I got it right here.
So, does Jay Birchfield want to come up and talk now, and then that way we can have those things before we bring the rest of the public in?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jay Birchfield, offices at 302 Campus View Drive in Columbia, Missouri. We are the developer. We do development for MFA Oil, Break Time Convenience Stores around the state in many different capacities, from remodels to new constructions, to site selection and the like. With me tonight is John States, who is also a partner of mine, but is the general contractor. So any construction-related questions, I'll obviously defer to John. So, on the heels of Dollar Tree, which was a huge boon to Warrensburg and a huge success, we work, I work with Lee Summit Economic Development Council, I'm on their board, I'm on the board of Regional Economic Development, Inc. in Columbia. And so, there's a whole lot of people that spend a whole bunch of time efforts trying to get a win like that. So congratulations to the city on that. As part of that project, it was big news around the state and that's what first attracted us back to Warrensburg. I have a long history with Warrensburg, my parents met here in school, went to the Army, came back, grad school, grew up on a turkey farm up at Rob Dyer's land north of town. So I was one of the developers of Country Club Care Center and the Vineyards, and so have been around. We recently, we own and develop the IHOP. So we've been in Warrensburg a lot over the years. And so, when Mr. Brady, whom I've known for a long time, I saw that he was associated with Dollar Tree, I reached out to him and said, "What would you think about a convenience store, a travel center next to Dollar Tree?" That's what started the discussion. We got MFA Oil interested in it. Everything was good, except for they wanted to know, as all retailers do, they want to know about signage. And so, the question came up about signage, that's where all of this kind of surfaced, aside from the annexation and the zoning, which are natural progressions that need to happen in the area. Beyond that, it is the signage. And so, I met with staff and they said, "What do you need?" MFA Oil, their directors of retail, said, "We need 80 to 90 feet." That was where this started. MFA strives to be a great corporate citizen and they, in all the communities that they are in, they do their best to be a corporate citizen, whether it's sponsorships, charities, raffles, you name it, they try and give back to the communities that they're in. We heard, they heard, staff informed us, newspaper editorials, we pay attention to that, MFA pays attention to that. So on Friday, we had a heart-to-heart with MFA and said, "Hey, this is what it looks like." They said, you know, we said, "We don't know anything about what the council will do, this is on the heels of PNZ, and we don't know." We asked them, John and I said, "MFA, what is your walk-away point?" We looked at it, we had done some field testing the week prior, some site view reviews, site corridor, site plane reviews of it the week before, and we had different data from about 50 feet to 90 feet. And they said, "90 feet is ideal." I said, "That's not the question. The question is, what's the walk-away?" They said, "60 feet." So we looked at 60 feet, and it is not ideal, but that is the point to where at 60 feet, the top of the sign will still be two feet below the top of Dollar Tree's building. I have an exhibit that I would like to show. And I don't know that I have... May I approach the council?
Yes.
So this is, there are several copies here, but on... On that exhibit, it shows a site view of the terrain with the elevation of the Dollar Tree building, from its finished floor elevation to the top of its walls. Its wall is 41.7 feet tall from floor to top. And it shows the terrain falling downhill towards 50 from north to south. Shows the finished floor elevation of the sign base and the top of a 60-foot sign. And then furthermore, it shows the elevation of our convenience store, which is another five feet below that as we fall downhill. So that's a good exhibit to show what 60-foot signage does. What MFA is giving up is zero visibility of that sign from southbound 13 traffic. Always good visibility northbound 13. Zero visibility eastbound 50 and selected view corridors, so where the sign literally does not get totally lost in the mass of the Dollar Tree building on the westbound 50 view corridors. So that is a pretty good example of what that looks like. Our property and our sign really is dwarfed by the mass and scale of the Dollar Tree building, in all likelihood. Again, a 90-foot sign that would give us southbound 13 visibility, it still will not really give us eastbound 50 visibility. It's just the topography there for a long time. It's really not visible until you're at the interchange. A question came up about the orientation of the signage. Our preference would be to orient it, if you will, southeast to northwest more on that bias. If the mayor is north, then we would kind of go like this, because that's the primary view corridor to that westbound 50 traffic that's there. That also would orient away from Cahill subdivision, if you will, instead of being due east and west on that. The question came up about illumination. The sign is the illumination that it would be on that sign. Our lighting engineers that do the photometrics explained it this way. At 60 feet, the sign is fully lit on a dark street, you could stand underneath the sign and it's dark. So you're not, it's internal, bulb, backlit, semi-opaque, plastic panels, typical thing. So it's not pointing, spotting, strobing, none of that. And actually, really, most all of the sign visibility would be in the darkness hours as it will be dwarfed against the backdrop of the Dollar Tree from many different angles. I have more details on the actual building, if you would like, although that's really not up for questioning today, but it is a 57, 52 to 5700 square foot convenience store. They call it a neighborhood market concept. We just built one on our property in Lee Summit. Neighborhood market, meaning it's a little bigger, more fresh food options, more prepared foods on a daily basis are done in their regional commissaries and brought out to the stores. There will be a 25 to 30-seat smokestack barbecue restaurant with drive-through lane that is jackstack barbecue out of Kansas City. It's a, it's one of their spin-off concepts that we have the license rights to, so it's a dedicated barbecue. And it will be a convenience store, very similar to the one we just built in Lee Summit, as well as, we just built one in Moberly, we just built one in Clinton on Highway 7 as well. I'm happy to answer any other questions and hope that MFA's offer, we would still like to have 90, but once you get below 90, you're really down to that level there to where we've got to at least be some visibility there.
And your intent is to position the sign, setting it towards the rear of the property, or, you know, 400 feet from the setbacks? So you're talking like the middle of Veterans Road, not at the front of the property, correct?
That is correct. So here is, if I can give you that, Mr. Mayor, and there are the two red circles with the X in it, kind of in the medians of that rear entrance. How we are citing the property is, it'd be the convenience store out front along 50, I mean, along 13 and Veterans, then the building, and then the truck court, the travel center RV, that will be in the rear of the property or on the east edge of the property back there. So to answer your question, sir, the signage would be probably halfway back to the depth of the property. And again, that is for the visibility primarily for that westbound 50 traffic.
Right.
Across that valley there.
So that, and that's what, to make it visible from 50, with 60 feet, it's not going to be visible at all, it's going to be two feet lower than the building adjacent to you.
From 13?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
I'm sorry, did you say it would be the front X or the back?
One of those two. It really turns into a turn radius and that is a 90% site plan there that's still in process, but it'll be close to that area away from Highway 13.
And what is the sign, what effect potentially, how important is the sign and why? And what aspects are on the sign that make it important?
Well, just the brand identity, the brand recognition identity for it. It's, you know, it's debatable. It's always debated, the value of that signage and, you know, where is it? But it is still the school of thought that, and that's not my call, we do the more real estate side. We will own this property. Mr. Brady will be a partner in the property, we are, I am a partner in the property and lease it to MFA, but so it's really their call on that retail decision. But it'll, it'll, it shows break time, it'll advertise smokestack, the barbecue, it'll have pricing for fuel.
And then the pricing is the, probably one of the number one drivers as far as people stopping at particular gas station is they can see the price from a four-day exit, that's a, that's much cheaper.
It used to be, and now with technology, it is, pricing is on-demand and it's changed on-demand, you're not out there with a sticky thing and trying to suction cup numbers off the sign anymore. And everybody's tracking everybody's comex trading on the fuel and, you know, the major players are within, you know, half a cent of each other, real-time, second it changes. So it's important, but I don't know that it's, it's important to them.
They don't play the game.
But I don't know that it's...
There's not as much lag between them playing the games like they used to.
I don't know that it's that important to the consumer anymore. You're finding where it's convenient to get your gas and...
Do they plan on going on the MoDOT signs also to pull the traffic off of?
The blue signs?
Right.
I'm sure they will. Yeah, I'm sure they will.
Have you had any similar properties with this disparity in elevation as well as next to, probably not next to that large of a building, I'm assuming, but the elevation changes with the backdrop of the buildings?
No, no, nothing that we could even get close to on this. Usually, it's out on the hard corner and, you know, it's very visible and there's not a 27-acre building next to you.
Yeah.
One of the major criteria factors that limit the visibility from 50? That makes sense, you need to get 90 feet up in the air.
Well, it's tree cover and just elevation, topography. You know, there's a couple of alleys, both east and west of us, immediately, east and west of the intersection, of the interchange. And so, it's just, and the hills, they're there, have trees.
They need to get up over the tree line in the hills.
Yeah. Or hit those selected view corridors on the westbound traffic, and that's what this sign does. And if anything else comes up, I'll be happy to answer it, if that's appropriate.
Thank you.
There is one more question. Any reason why the sign isn't proposed as a construction closer to the highway? Are you seeing property, purchasing additional property closer to the highway and putting it there as opposed to on the...
Um, no, we have, have we entertained that?
Yeah, have you looked at it? Is there a reason why? To build closer and build a shorter sign because it's closer to the Highway 50?
Well, one of the first things we look at is off-premise signage, which is, you know, greatly frowned upon in almost every ordinance. greatly frowned upon in, in almost every ordinance in every community, but that's what that would be, would be an off-premise signage. Even if we owned a little 10-foot area of ground.
A billboard.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I hope that answers your question. I'm not sure. And if we went closer to 50 on our property as that exhibit I showed you, we're going downhill to the, to the creek.
So you lose elevation.
We're, we're losing, yes.
Instead of being two feet, well, look at a 60-foot sign, instead of being two feet below the roof line, you're going to be down 10, 12, who knows how many feet below the roof line.
I mean, for example, the floor of Dollar Tree is higher than the parapet top roof part of our building.
Right.
In that fall.
The proposed location, either one of the sign, is that determined by the existing high point in the properties that-
No, it's really going to be a site planning as they get the turn radiuses and how that site plan fits in there. Which one of those, we've got utilities that are coming in on that, on the westernmost one have utilities that come in from Veterans towards the building. That could be in conflict, so that's why we said it could possibly be the next hopover to the east in that island median landscaped area.
Okay. And just to be expressed to be clear, if the ordinance isn't changed to allow the sign 60 feet or greater, that's a deal breaker and the, the convenience store gas station will not be built in.
And finally, I don't have another opportunity to talk. You had your budget meeting and that. The economics of break time are also important. I mean, this, in the big picture of you wouldn't do Dollar Tree for just Dollar Tree. It's the economic multiplier that rings into a certain area in your community. Our store will have 18 new full-time equivalent employees, six part-times, so 24 new positions. The sales tax alone will contribute another excess of $100,000 annually to the community. And so, and that's, you know, it's stabilized operations. So it is not just a venue that's there. It does fit with the bigger plan that I read in the, the beauty contest proposal that, that the community won when they got Dollar Tree was, it's a, it's a catalyst that's there.
Tax revenue projections, is that just sales tax or does that include fuel tax?
That was just sales tax, yeah.
That's just from-
I mean, sales tax and fuel, fuel tax.
Combined.
Combined, yes. Yes.
All right. You got some more questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we'll start on this list, then we'll come over here and get these. So first person up is Anthony Bickerton, 1241 Vivian Drive.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anthony Bickerton, live out in Cahill neighborhood. I have some handouts if you don't mind. A lot of information I'm going to present. The representative from MFA has already sold all my thunder. He's already talked about the loss of sight lines going eastbound lane, which I showed pictures of, that, that there is no view even with a 90-foot sign in that direction. The limited view of the sign coming from westbound on a specific corridor in there that he also talked to is, is also limited at that point. Did I hand out all of them? Can I get one? As I represent a good portion of Cahill, about 85 members of the neighborhood, there is about 127 households right now developed in that neighborhood if you just, if you needed to know the numbers. Initially, we were opposed to this gas station convenience store going in. The biggest concern is the desirability of the neighborhood going down. We feel that it's already, has gone down in desirability just due to the Dollar Tree warehouse going in. Many people that are here that do have houses along the northern lake have already had their, their views and spending $400,000 on a house to have their lake view gone, it was probably not what they were expecting or what they were led to believe when all this was going up. So right now, we're trying to pick and choose our battles. We know that the gas station going in, while, we don't want it to go in, we know that, that has kind of become a lost cause. We have to pick and choose our battles. So we decided that the sign ordinance was one of them that we've already got Dollar Tree going out the entrance there and there's about 12 houses there at the entrance that will have a beautiful view of not only the Dollar Tree, but the, the gas station slash truck stop convenience center. So, and their impression is their property values will go down. If they're, if, if it's not a desirable house to buy, that means the property, the, the cost of someone coming in wanting to buy that property will decrease. They're in people's backyards, it's right out in people's front yards. Many of them, that's not what they moved into Cahill for, so it is, it is a big concern. As far as the amendment, our opposition to the amendment, we understand that this was put in specifically to, for the concerns of MFA and break time going in. I do have some pictures. Sorry, they're not that great. This is a home printer that I have, so the pictures aren't as accurate as, as I'd like them to be. Back on February 1st, break time had come out and done a test. And if you can see in the first picture, that's basically, that was a view from Veterans straight ahead, and that's where they had parked it. That's from my map, that's about a 90-foot crane with the sign on it. And I'm assuming that they were putting out there to see the sightlines. Where would that be visible? From 50 westbound, 50 eastbound, 13 northbound, and 13 southbound. So if you go to the first picture, that view is highway, East Highway 40. This is kind of a moot point right now. Basically it shows that even with a 90-foot sign, there is no visibility going eastbound to see that sign. Even at 90 feet, there was no visibility until you pass the exit. And at that point, there's, there is a turnaround lane, but most people won't turn around for that. Let's see, the next one is basically showing the same, same view. There is no view, there's not even a view of Dollar Tree warehouse you can see. It's all below the, the sightline. So a 90-foot sign would not give any visibility on Eastbound Lane. So you can show us here, Highway East, 13 interchange, that's about one of the only areas you can see it. While you're going over, going eastbound, you'll be able to look to the left and you can see the sign down 13. Whether it's 90-foot or 30-foot, you should be able to see that sign. So then we got the West Highway 50. As the MFA representative talked about, there is only a small corridor, about maybe 1,000 feet, maybe 1,500 feet where that sign would be visible off of Highway 50. And at 50 or, at 90 or, or 30 feet, that sign is still going to be this little blob that might not even be distinguishable at those distances that they can tell. If there's signs out on the highways, probably more than sufficient technology, like he said, has allowed people to know where, where these things are a lot easier. Truck drivers are going to know where this is. If they don't, then maybe they shouldn't be truck drivers. But so, let's see, what else do we have? Like I said, there's only the one corridor. And then another section to see it, if you could see it on the West Highway 50 at 13 exit, that's another visibility, but that's right at the, the exit to 13 going westbound. So you can see it's just barely, that's a 90-foot, that's just barely above the tree line right there. And at that point, you're already at the exit to safely get off at that point would, in my opinion, it doesn't help. The last one is, these are a comparison chart of cities around, this was also probably provided at the zoning commission. Maxine Heights, cities throughout Missouri, Lee's Summit, Columbia, Jeff City, Sedalia, Columbia, all of them are in line with what Warrensburg has. And they do just fine. So our position is that with the size of the height, it's, not only will it be eyesore for those living in Cahill, especially 90 feet, it's that much larger than, than the actual building going in, that a 30-foot sign would be sufficient for, for anybody going southbound, northbound, eastbound, and westbound, that a 30-foot sign wouldn't make, there would be minimal visibility differences between the two heights in, in our opinion. And then I know that, that part of it is the advertising and that sightline for, for people traversing 50 and so forth. Coming south on 13, those who've driven the road know that, that turn, that even at, whether it's 30 feet or 90 feet, you're not going to miss that, that stop at all. You'd be making that turn. Hopefully there's going to be a light there or something because, and we'll, we're going to deal with that with the Traffic Commission and MoDOT on, on a light or possible turn lanes at that section coming out of Cahill and that intersection between Veterans and 13. You know, so it's already difficult enough for us to pull out, you know, with traffic coming from the north, especially at a very high rate of speed. Imagine if you have people trying to turn into the truck stop or into the neighborhood and people passing you on, on emergency lanes. It's already a problem now, but it's going to increase as the, as that goes in. So is there any questions for me?
How do you feel about 60 feet? I'm just curious.
It's interesting because we didn't really talk about, at least many of us were, we, we understood that it was, 90 feet was going to be an all or nothing. So, but we haven't really, I haven't talked to those numbers of the, and seen what, what they feel about 60 feet. But we thought 90 feet was overkill. As I said, we already have enough of our sightline diminished. We'd like to keep it, you know, I guess, say copasthetic, but, you know, meeting within Warrensburg city limits, 30 feet, it's 30 feet. But we also believe it also set a dangerous precedent. If the commission decides to, or the city council decides to pass this ordinance, what's going to stop other businesses throughout Warrensburg to request the same amendments to areas throughout Warrens, you know, throughout Warrensburg? Because if they say you did it for, you know, this area here specifically to get break time into our neighborhood, well, what's stopping another business from giving the same, for lack of a better word, ultimatum?
Does canting the sign affect your opinion at all? The fact that it's 400 foot further back than you first anticipated as well as at a 45 degree angle? Does that change your opinion at all?
A little bit. I mean, I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for anybody else that's, that, you know, because we've, you know, we've only have limited information, you know, before this meeting on, just based on, you know, what was put out there as far as the test and what, you know, was provided on the, the agenda and so forth. So we really hadn't any time to discuss it.
And several of us had, had, had the opportunity to meet with you privately, and we appreciate you taking the time to corral or organize several folks to take the initiative and be a part of the process in the community. So thank you for, for stepping up to do that.
And I appreciate those that I met with this past two or three, four days to, at least in more informal matters and discuss this instead of trying to put it all in here at this meeting, especially with the short timeline that everyone has for this vote.
Mr. Birchfield, is this document that you gave us, I know the remainder of, you know, that shows the sign and the, you know, leveling, is that something that the community members who are here are able to see? Because I-
We have.
Oh, you guys have that as well.
Not only was that passed around, but the, the actual, and that was another thing. We hadn't seen anything. And I'm sure you haven't seen anything of what was going in there.
That's the first we saw of that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you guys-
Yeah, we had seen, yeah.
It was printed at about 11 o'clock in the day.
Yeah.
Then they got it backwards and you can see the break time is a mirror image of the version of the building.
Oh, so it is.
Yeah, that's hard off the press.
And we appreciate Break Time, you know, releasing this information. Some businesses will keep that confidential and not share that. So we appreciate you letting everybody know the full magnitude of what we're looking at. Thank you.
Any further questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The, it's here. Joe Warren, 1235 Vivian Drive.
Good evening. I don't want to repeat anything that Anthony said. I'm kind of just speaking for myself. I've kind of, I've always, I've been in favor of the Dollar Tree going in. I was in favor, I'm in favor of, of the proposed gas station going in. I think those are good economic drivers for our community. However, you know, I'm opposed to 90-foot sign. I, I think that there's a reason, there's an ordinance on, you know, on the books. Nobody wants to see a 90-foot sign outside their neighborhood. Nobody in the community does, not just Cahill. And so I do think it's fundamentally unfair that you would allow, if you were to approve it, to allow it just for, for that area outside of, right outside of Cahill because you wouldn't approve it anywhere else in the community. And so because of that, that instance, I, I do think 60 feet is, is, even though it's, it's more than, than the current ordinance, I think that's a fair compromise. I think that looking at the topography of the land, of looking at the building, the Dollar Tree next to it, I mean, I don't see that as making a huge difference whether it's 30 feet or 60 feet to, to our view. Again, I don't want to speak to anybody, for anybody else, I just want to speak for myself. But, but yeah, just the fundamental fairness about the 90 feet and allowing that was my main issue and my issue of contention here. So, thank you.
So you're, Barbara Rampon, 1206 Hillman Lane. Is she leaving? Okay. Uh, so you're Jeremy Bass, looks like you crossed your name off. Did you? Okay.
Jared Fawcett.
Jared Fawcett, 1227 Rich Boulevard.
I'm also resident of Cahill. I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I think a lot of what you've already been thinking about, some of the blue MoDOT signs, if you drop that sign down to 60-foot, who are you really advertising to? Cahill? They're going to know it's there. The people traveling up and down 13, the truck drivers, technology and everything else is going to let them know that there's a break time there. Hopefully, we're going to have some sort of slowdown at that intersection that's going to already slow down people. They're going to see that 30-foot sign, that's well within our ordinance. If you put the blue MoDOT signs in the right places, the big break time and jackstacks underneath it, people are going to pull up and see it. Extending this beyond 60, you know, to 60-foot, you know, who's going to see it? Who's going to see it that's not already going to know that it's there? 90-foot, now you've set a precedence where you're going to have, you know, we want Warrensburg to grow. You know, there's going to be other businesses there. How many other 90-foot signs are you going to have there? I just want you to take that all into consideration before voting on this and either approving or disapproving it, whether or not, you know, that's something that you want to see on the skyline of Warrensburg because those are going to pop up everywhere. You know, even if 25% of the signs, you know, the businesses going in put up signs, that's a lot of signs that could be out there. I couldn't find any statistics on Missouri, but I did find a few out of the state of Texas that says things like, you know, the eastbound traffic on 50, they're not going to be looking to the north. They're going to be looking, you know, at the exit signs and looking straight ahead. So, you know, you add into, you know, the topography and everything else, the fact that you're not going to be able to see those signs all that well. Again, who are you really advertising to? That's all I've got. Thank you.
Janaya Donaldson? I hope I pronounced that wrong. Did I pronounce that wrong? 1209 Holland Square.
Hi.
Did I get that name right?
Janaya, yeah. I didn't, actually didn't expect to speak either, I was just going to sign in, but I definitely am a concerned resident of Cahill and I agree with everything that they have presented to you guys today. And I hope you take it into consideration because we love Warrensburg and we love our community and we don't want to take away from our community or take away from Warrensburg. And I hope that we can kind of come together and, you know, make it, you know. Anyway, so I agree with what they said and I hope that you guys take it into consideration and think about our residents and Warrensburg in the same way. Thank you. Anyway, so I agree with what they said, and I hope that you guys take it into consideration and think about our residents and Warrensburg in the same way. Thank you.
Let's see here, John Skates, did you want to say anything?
Good.
You're good?
Okay.
And Heather?
I think she left, didn't she?
Okay. All right. All right, and at that point, we'll close that public session. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. So Jay, you mentioned that you built one of these in Lee Summit and in Clinton, correct? So Lee Summit is one of here, one of these are listed on here in the comparison chart where they have a height map, 30 feet. Did you make a similar request to Lee Summit, and what was the result?
We did not, it's in the I-470 corridor plan, which is a special zoning overlay district there, that it's, you can't even do 30 feet there.
Okay. In the height of your, of your.
Probably is sited on the highest point in Lee Summit, at the intersection of Stroud and Road in I-470.
In the height of your sign in Clinton?
Probably 20 feet, it's an existing, it was a Senex store that we bought and tore down and built a new store in its place.
Okay, and then Moberly?
90.
Okay, and then, did you have it anywhere else? Do you have one in Columbia?
Yeah, there's, in Columbia.
But not the travel center, not this prototype.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to ask you, are any of those break time stations in such a close proximity to a neighborhood in any of the other communities as they would be to Cahill? Especially the one with the 90-foot sign?
No.
Why Cahill?
Okay, ma'am, we're not going to do this, it's, you know, if you'd like to sign up to speak, you may. Would you like to sign up to speak?
Sure, I'll sign up to speak right now.
And as she signs up, just a friendly reminder that you're having a conversation with the council, when are they going to have a dialogue with other audience members?
Well, then I, my name's Angela Hunter, I'm a resident of Cahill. I would implore you to ask this break time guy if any of the break time stations that he has put up are in such a close proximity to a residential neighborhood as this one would be, and what effect those gas stations or 90-foot signs have had on those neighborhoods. I'm guessing that none of them are in such close proximity. We all understand that Warrensburg needs to grow and we want that, but just like everyone else is saying, people use technology more than road signs these days, and we all know that 90 feet is overkill, and that 60 feet is probably where you guys were wanting to arrive, and I just would implore you all to think about how you would feel if that's what you saw every day out the front of your neighborhood. And if you had to sell your house, if you were buying a house in that neighborhood, if you were looking at a house in that neighborhood, would that sway you as to, sure, I'm going to buy this house that's right next to a gas station in this busy street, and it's obvious that, that we have no say in whether or not it goes in, but seeing as how this is happening regardless of what the homeowners think or want, it would be nice if the city would take us into consideration as far as property values and our views, so, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll close that session. All right, and then, let's see here, we're going to skip 8-1 and 8-2 and move to 9, right? All right, so first reading on, let's see here, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as Missouri Route 13, Highway Right-Away, north of Highway 50, and approximately 1,850 feet south of Highway 13, and northeast 200 Road, northeast HH Highway intersection.
This will be just for a first reading, this is the first reading in the ordinance you had here in law earlier in the separate evening for the MoDOT right-of-way.
Does anybody have any conversation on that one?
No.
Nothing on that? All right. Please, the vote, right? Just moving on, okay. Oil Investments LLC, property, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Route 13 Highway and the extension of Veterans Road.
Had the public hearing earlier this evening, we have been answering questions.
Just reporting order for the public, so ordinances are often, whether over two meetings, over one, these are on the agenda tonight to be read for the first time here, second reading will be the next council meeting. There's no vote by the council on these particular items, that vote for approval or denial will be at the next council meeting, as well as once that is determined on the, possibly the zoning to these parcels once they're annexed in. And those will be on the next agenda also, and I would assume those will be on the first and second reading, so council will be taking votes on annexation of these three properties as well as the zoning of these three properties at the next council meeting. And we do that so the public has an opportunity to come by comment before the council makes a decision.
Do they have anything on that one? An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Route 13 Highway and Highway 50.
Just for first reading, the second reading will be in two weeks.
Anybody have anything for that one? All right, first and second readings. An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for an ambulance service in a general business district located at 500 East Young Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Had the conditional use permit public hearing earlier this evening for this property, public, I'm sorry, the applicant had some additional information. On this one, we do need to have you vote separately, just like voice vote, on the 40-foot versus 60-foot driveway entrance, that is something that is in Chapter 20 of the Code of City Ordnances, and so that is not something the Board of Adjustment can rule on, they only have authority over Chapter 27, so that appeal is newer to the current government requirement, request that came from Dr. Hotzma a couple weeks ago, forward to this body, same type of thing. And so that would be one decision point, and then also you have the ordinance.
So with the driveway, it's just this for the ambulance, 40-foot, 60-foot versus?
They're asking for 60, and the code currently is written at 40, and so it would be an exception to grant this.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion and a voice vote on that.
I would make the motion that we would approve the 60-foot approach for the ambulance bay.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
We have a motion for the first and second reading now, right?
Yes.
I move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use 13-300 ambulance service in a GB general business district located at 500 East Young Street in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section 27-404 and establishing Section 27-405 of the Code of City Ordnances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding residential driveways.
Do you have any answer to any questions?
I'd move that bill to pass to second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending Section 27-404G and establishing Section 27-405 of the Code of City Ordnances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding residential driveways. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
An ordinance amending, an ordinance amending Section 27-504 of the Code of City Ordnances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding sign requirement permits.
I move to amend the ordinance with discussion prior to voting, to spark discussion. I would like to, after hearing everyone speak on not wanting signs to, 90-foot signs to pop up all over, I would like to adjust the setback or the buffer between signs from 1,400 feet to 2,500 feet, that will greatly diminish the amount of signs that come up. And so I think that's something that we can do for the folks in Cahill as well as for future use. Anybody have any opinions on that?
I agree there, I think 2,500 gives us control, we don't have that many of those signs in the outfit.
That would limit, you're going to have one possibly, but never more than two north of 50, depending on where they lay, but 2,500 feet is a pretty good way.
We're basically talking about two intersections anyway.
Right, yeah.
And this would just do residential setbacks, is that what you're talking about?
No, so this graphic here that shows, so there, looks like there's about 10 larger signs, any sign above could go in that 2,800-foot circle.
And you're proposing?
And I'm saying, let's max it out and make it 2,500 feet, which makes the amount of signs that can go in that area much, very much, it would be, it'd be very difficult to even add another sign, depending on where this one goes.
You look at the circles.
Change from 1,400 to 2,500.
To 25.
14, okay. 14, yeah. So Doug, in terms of amending the?
This is a motion to amend some ordinance that's presented, so if there's further discussion, the mayor can go ahead and call that vote.
Or just, let me get something, it's just for the setback or for the whole ordinance?
No, this is just a setback, it's just a setback.
Okay, so we'll call a motion to vote.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
So at this point, you would have an amended bill before you with the change of the spacing requirement from 1,400 feet to 2,500 feet. With the height requirement still being as proposed by staff to be 90 feet?
Right.
Correct.
So I would like to propose, in the height requirement, hearing the public and the
Cahill folks, to amend that to 60 feet and get away from the 90 feet.
I'd like to have some discussion.
Discussion, I'd like to have some discussion.
So I want to speak a little bit. I know one of the things Angela said is, how would you like to have that as you're leaving your neighborhood? I live in Cahill, so that is what I would see leaving my neighborhood. I'm a little bit surprised the amount of Cahill residents that have not reached out to me. I would have thought maybe I would be an advocate for the neighborhood, for being a voice. I've talked to Joe quite a bit, I do actually support a gas station, I think it will be great convenience for us. I have four kids, so I do realize that there are some concerns as far as the safety of our children, and I have those as well, but I also think that there's concerns simply with our kids, you know, riding down Veterans Road in general, and those are, anybody who's been on the Cahill page knows the Johnson kids. And so I, I do just want to say, I'm not a fan of the 90-foot sign, I think it's too large, that's just my opinion. Based on this, I would have said no to a 60 personally, but based on this, it makes sense to me. Also, as a business owner, branding and signage is so extremely important, and so 60 makes sense to me. And it's not something I think I would look at every day and think, well, that's just awful, leaving my neighborhood. In fact, I'll probably stop for a slushy.
And I think it's also good that there's another way out, once, you know what I mean, through the Waldwood property go that way, so they won't have to deal with maybe the light situation or all the trucks and such too, so that'll be a huge asset, I think, for Cahill.
I don't think the truckers are really going to be as big of a nuisance, I mean, I truly don't. I, truckers don't want to be in your neighborhood any more than you want them in your neighborhood, it's difficult to maneuver around a neighborhood. They don't want to be around children driving in their way, or, you know, riding in their way, or walking in the way, as much as we don't want our children around large trucks.
I have no reason why a truck would go through Cahill.
No, no.
I think that with the grading and the fact that the position of where the sign is going to be is 62 feet below the roof, so six, in my opinion, 60-foot doesn't accomplish anything from the north, and if I was putting in a, you know, a gas station and wanted people to see my prices as well as see my brand, I would want to be visible. And so I think that setting a partner up for success is important, so my, I think the 90, 90 feet may not even be adequate, you know, 100 feet, like the Higginsville store may be there, but that's not what they're asking for, so 90-foot, I definitely think would set them up for success. With the setback, the larger requirement on that, we're able to limit the number of, that would be there, so we're talking one sign, the likelihood of another sign is very, very small, and I think that, given the business-friendly environment and how hard we've worked, we're talking over 10 years that this has been in the works, in the plan, mapped out as a future growth area for Warrensburg. The last two to three years, we've spent a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of trips to Chicago, recruiting, Las Vegas, Texas, in order to get an opportunity similar to this, and I think a partner like Break Time that's putting a very, very high-class facility that is mostly automotive-friendly, about 75%, pump spaces versus 25% on the trucks, along with barbecue joint, I think that setting them up for success, keeping the 90, it is going to raise it 30 feet, but literally the 60 feet puts them two feet below the roof of Dollar Tree. They have a unique position where they're 20 feet below grade on their area, as well as a monster, one of the largest buildings, the largest building in our area for many, many miles. I think due to those special concerns, I think that in changing this ordinance, we're setting them up for, to win with a 90-foot sign, as well as we're limiting the number of people, it's not setting a precedent, because it would be very challenging to get even one more 90-foot sign in our entire community. I think that's enough safety that we can have kind of a middle-of-the-road between being receptive to Cahill, especially knowing that the sign is now canted, that they're not going to have to look at the full face of that, as well as they're setting it back 400 feet further from Cahill than I thought it was going to be, I thought it was going to be right on 13 Highway. I'm comfortable seeing it as a win-win, the folks in Cahill have it a little further away, it's canted, we've made it to where no other signs can be out there, and we've still set the, the business climate that we are business-friendly, and we want them to collect as much tax revenue as possible, and we're setting the stage for that. So I would not be in favor of 60 feet, it doesn't accomplish the goal, it's still below the roof line, I would be an advocate to keep it at 90.
I would like to talk, I'm a business owner.
I would like to talk, I'm a business owner myself, so the signage at two feet, Break Time is welcome to come. Everybody knows Break Time, all those trucks are gonna go by, even if it was thirty feet, you are gonna be successful. Jack stacked, you've got, oh, all those coming to Warrensburg, so ninety, I don't agree. Sixty, I don't either, but I'll compromise. It doesn't matter if you have a sign, this is my opinion only as a business owner, you don't need a sign, 'cause people are gonna know you're there. Google it, where's the closest Break Time? I'm in Sedalia, they're gonna say Warrensburg, right there. My motion is sixty feet. Still stands.
Well, we have, we have a motion on the table at, at ninety, but I think...
Sixty.
That's sixty. I think the, uh... The fact that the jobs that Break Time is bringing to town, the tax revenue, taking those numbers into consideration, I would tend to agree that we want to provide them with every opportunity that we possibly can to succeed.
Bob, can I just ask you, do you think that they would have been willing to go down to sixty feet if they didn't think they could succeed?
I don't think that they would have, no, I, I don't, but I, I think that they're willing to concede that thirty feet, but we, I think we need to, need to offer them the best possible chance at, at success. And the fact that it's a Break Time and you can Google it, I concede that point, but not everybody does it.
I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna pick up a lot of revenue off the Dollar Tree. I mean, that's, a lot of their trucks are gonna be coming off of the Dollar Tree, but I can understand their desire to pull some more off the highway. I mean, you don't build a facility of this size and not expect to try to pull something off the highway.
Right.
So this is, this is change, just changing the height from ninety feet down to sixty feet.
The motion on the floor is to amend the bill from the height restriction of ninety feet to sixty.
To sixty, okay. Lund?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
No.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
No.
So right now, we're sitting at ninety feet with an, and up the setback from fourteen hundred feet to twenty-five hundred feet. Any more discussion?
At this point, you've had your first reading, so...
I move to pass amended bill, amended ornament, ordinance to second reading by title with the twenty-five hundred foot setback and ninety foot.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
And for the public's benefit, the procedural vote that just happened is for moving the ordinance forward for a vote on passage or rejection. The yes votes there are procedural, that does not indicate the vote of each member as to, as to approval or rejection of the ordinance as presented.
That will come now.
Correct.
Right.
This is an ordinance amending section twenty-seven dash five oh four of the Code of City Ordnances of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri regarding sign requiring permits. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
No.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
No.
Jacob?
Yes.
I just kinda like to make a statement publicly, both for those that came conceding, but also those that will be watching this on YouTube over the coming days, and I guess for posterity for the future, I mean, council members are right, there's been a, there's been a series of decisions that have led up to this point. This is, these types of problems don't happen overnight, and there's prior councils and staff and citizens have all made decisions that have gotten us to this point. And I know that I've, I've read some comments about whether or not input by the public matters or not, and regardless of whether or not you feel this decision tonight represented your opinion or not, it, since I've been here two years, I think this is the first time I've seen a three-two vote, and so I think your voice hasn't been heard. I think that's reflected in the vote of the council. And ultimately, this is not an easy decision for councils, not an easy decision for staff, but you find the same differences of opinion even among the staff on this issue. But the council is elected and makes these tough decisions. This is not an easy decision. I know that they appreciate it, and I've appreciated the feedback and the involvement of, of the Cahill residents regarding this matter, and, and hopefully this pans out to be a decision for the best interest of the community as a whole moving forward. And we will continue to watch that as staff and do anything that can minimize any potential negative effects of development like this. But again, I think this has been a very proactive council as far as development is concerned, and we want to continue to, to move Warrensburg forward in, in many, many ways and avenues. And anyway, I just want, again, to say thank you to the public. I know there's been a lot of meetings, there's been a lot of conversation, and there's been a lot of effort, and to be honest with you, even though you may or may not believe it at this point, I find it refreshing. I, I like citizen engagement. I get a bit frustrated many times as a city manager that we're doing budget hearings and making important decisions, and we have no public here to provide input. And so I have appreciated over the last couple of weeks and months, the activism of the Cahill neighborhood, and coming forward and making sure your voices are heard, and I hope you don't stop doing that.
I think it's probably the toughest dollar that anyone sitting up here has ever...
You're not getting there.
And I too would like to thank you for your participation.
All right, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Emery Saff and Sons Inc. for the Brady Commerce Park Veterans Road Extension Project Phase Two in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, we want to get more staff open to all the bids for the project, which has enailed the ability to have a roadway to do these, which is, which can, I don't know. And looking at the, the engineer's estimate, the project for Concrete Street coming, engineer's estimate is six hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars, thirty-four cents. Emery Saff and Sons did the concrete street at five hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. This project has bid both way to the concrete street and asphalt street to make sure we got within what we thought were good estimates to get the cost for the project. Staff has felt all along with Concrete Street, particularly with the uses becoming apparent for that property would be a more durable street. So staff is asking that we approve the bid for five hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars, which is seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars under the engineer's estimate for this project, and approve Emery Saff as a successful bidder for the project.
It's probably a sedentary, but whatever the same project from start to finish, we got it.
We're wanting this contractor, he's sitting probably at home getting ready to send us the, all the finished documents on this right now. We've booked him today, he's got all his engines, everything is in order, but again, project, we want him to get as quick as possible, and we're under a deadline, we have a stone for the part of that.
But I think Dollar Tree's due in June or July or something.
They are, yeah. Coincidentally, Emery Saff and Sons did the groundwork, parking lot, worked for Dollar Tree, so they're, they're sitting right on site, they're, they're mobilized, so to speak.
The combined cost of phases one and two both coming in under engineering estimate, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the extension, Veterans Road Extension as part of the Dollar Tree, I forget, is that concrete, asphalt?
That is what we, we opted for for the phase two.
Phase two?
For the concrete. The other section, based on the asphalt.
Asphalt, right.
Staff is asking that council prove the concrete alternate for this project for this section.
This is something I've been pushing staff on. So it used to be that there was a significant price difference between asphalt and concrete, but as oil prices have gone up, and as they've become more efficient in processing oil, so the, the prices have basically evened out, so to speak. So it used to be you could replace an asphalt road probably three or four times before you ever met the cost of a concrete road, and now those have evened out, and the long-term benefits and the maintenance costs of a concrete road makes it much more advantageous to do concrete when you can afford it versus an asphalt. And even though the price per barrel of oil has dropped, again, because it's increased the efficiency, that material that they would use to make asphalt has still remained very little, so the actual cost of asphalt has not dropped with the price of oil. And based off of that, I've encouraged staff to continue, from the future, anytime we do road improvements or road replacements, is to move towards concrete, because the lifespan on a concrete road when properly maintained is probably forty to fifty years, as opposed to twenty years for an asphalt road, which still has to be milled and overlaid and sealed and everything else over time. And so as long as council is supportive, we are trying to transition to building concrete roads now instead of asphalt where we can. It'll take time, we've got a lot of roads, and we don't have money to replace them all, but as we do these new projects, we would like to start shifting to concrete as long as it financially makes sense.
Is there somewhere in Warrensburg that has that transition? I can't think of anywhere that goes from asphalt to concrete.
The neighborhood over near Arwitz is concrete, isn't it?
There's one in Warrensburg that is, it's pretty bad shape, but it's been in there for years.
Yes. The cul-de-sac.
You know, another example, a big PCA road, they're coming off of Young Street, Section Twenty, and we're even stationed there at Concrete Section. Also, streets out there in Target Building are all concrete.
With the new roads coming in, and other works, they're gonna step up next, in January, with snow piles and such, and more roads to plow and...
We, you know, you might think that, but we have several, a lot of ways to get around Cahill side, having a roadway cut straight here will make our response a lot easier. We're running out into the county, onto the state, to get to where we have to do that work, and now we won't have it.
Good point.
In addition to that, we don't have it on the agenda tonight, so to speak, but it's, it's related, and that is, when I was in Knoxville, we were doing the same thing, we were transitioning concrete streets. Right now with asphalt, when anyone times putting in a connect to, with a private line to a main or something like that, they cut out what they need to dig out, and then replace it back with an asphalt patch. What happens is, there's no way to do that without having the bumps, and then ultimately, you're also cutting in and deteriorating your road faster, because anytime you cut the road, there's no way to seal it all back up, and so you're gonna get penetration of water and everything else that freezes and thaws, and it breaks all that up. The advantage of concrete is it's done in panels, and one of the things we did in Knoxville is anytime someone cut a panel, they were required to replace the whole panel. We wouldn't let them just come in and cut out a quarter of a panel, replace a quarter of the panel back. We required that the entire panel be replaced, and so that's something that staff will probably be agreeing for, is a recommendation of a change with concrete streets, is that we won't allow contractors to just come and cut out a section and then basically cut back the longevity and lifespan of our roads, and when it's replaced, basically you touch the panel and buy it, you're replacing the whole panel.
That's from expansion joint to expansion.
Correct. We found that to be very effective in that community to, to maintain the longevity of those investment we've made in that group. So you're not very popular with the contractors, they wanna do as cheap as possible?
Yeah.
But we're looking out for the best interest of the public and what we've invested in that road.
So we need to move.
Need a motion.
Yeah. Need to make a motion, move said bill, second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Emery Saff and Sons Incorporated for the Brady Commerce Park Veterans Road Extension Project Phase Two in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation and the city clerk to execute a contract before ratification by the park board with Midwest Pool Management to manage the Warrensburg Community Center Pool and Nassif Aquatic Center Pool in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
I would first start by saying thank you to Kyle, doing a lot of the research prior to my arrival in Warrensburg. As you know, we have an aquatic management firm that we use to manage both the indoor pool at the community center and the outdoor pool at Nassif, and that contract has expired. So last fall, we went out to bid, and in December, we opened for bids, and we had twelve companies that we sent out proposals to, only three returned them back. Out of those three, our recommendation is to go with Midwest Pool Management to continue managing our pool. There are several reasons for this, they were not the lowest bid. The lowest bidder, USA Management, had some concerning things in their bid proposal. One of the first things that we noticed was the inconsistencies in the bid. There were several staffing names and email addresses that didn't quite match up, and a couple of other things, it kind of seemed like they copied and pasted their bid for another company into ours. They also state in several different places, thirty-four, thirty-six, and thirty-seven years that they've been around, which is inconsistent, and we found that they have reincorporated themselves a couple different times. They also don't have a local office here. They state that they are located in Kansas City, Missouri, but that is actually a post office box, which is concerning if there's an issue that we would need addressed. But the biggest thing, and why that they're under budget, is their staffing plan. So they, for example, only have nine lifeguards on rotation at Nassif, where Midwest Pool Management has thirteen. We think that's concerning from a safety standpoint, as well as a budget standpoint. We believe that they are going to end up having to bring in more lifeguards, which is actually gonna bring them over budget, exceeding their lowest bid. So we would like to recommend Midwest Pool Management.
Who are you currently with?
Midwest.
You're, okay, so it's an extension of their contract?
Yeah.
I think you guys have been with them for a while, haven't you?
For the whole nine years.
Yeah, that's my thought.
Their staffing levels, Midwest staffing levels, say last year, how do they compare with what they're proposing? Are they the same?
I will defer to Kyle, but I believe that they're the same.
Yeah, they're proposing the exact same staffing structures they have in years past. Our biggest concern with what USA Management proposed was a rotations issue, which leaves guards out on stand all a lot longer, which leaves you more susceptible to drowning incident and missing something like that. But yeah, they're proposing the exact same staffing structure.
Kyle, there were a few concerns last summer, I know, that made big news with Warrensburg at least, as far as people not showing up on time, opening the pool on time, stuff like that. Were those addressed before you?
Those issues, those, those issues aren't actually with the contractor, those are with our internal staff, and those issues haven't been addressed.
Okay. It was put out on the page as the contractor.
Yeah. Not by us.
Got it.
So the other company, that's, their staffing's proposed a lot lower, and I agree with you, I think, I think our lifeguards need to be a higher number than what they presented. If they were to go over budget, did that come back to us, or did that, they failed in their contract, so?
That amount, what they differ greatly on is the amount of do not succeed, which is where your salaries are. So anytime we would ask to add a lifeguard, then they would charge us hourly for that position. In particular, with the indoor pool, they're only proposing one guard essentially being on stand at all times in the indoor pool, and if you've been in the indoor pool, there are clearly two, two bodies of water, and you need a minimum of two, and then if you include the slide, you need upwards of four or five. So each time you'd add one of those staff, you'd add an hour at their billable rate, which would get us above that thirty thousand pretty quick.
So what they gave you was their billable rate, basically, per, per lifeguard?
Yeah, and, and we ask that from all bidders, is to provide that billable rate if we have to add lifeguards hours for any other reason. for any other reason.
Daniel, Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, to summarize. So even though we're not recommending going the lowest bidder, if the lowest bidder were to staff, the way that we've been doing it for the last several years, and staff the same way that the current company we're recommending now would do it, basically you're gonna have a budget amendment, and then their bid would no longer be the lowest bid.
Right.
That would probably be at or above what we're currently paying, was currently proposed with this company, which is why staff has done their homework and are now recommending upfront to go ahead, what would be with the lowest bidder with the current staffing expectations.
And that has been run by council. Okay.
So at this point, you're, you're taking action, and then it'll go to the park board. And the park board will actually officially approve the contract based off of your blessing and recommendation, as is outlined in our agreement with the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Set ordinance, we pass the second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving a contract for pool management services under the council's joint resolution with the Warrensburg Parks Board. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, let's see here. All right, number ten, appearances of the council not listed on the agenda. No one signed up? Okay, mayoral appointees. All right, first one was for the TIF Commission. Pretty much the only thing that's changed on that from the previous people is we've added Drew Lewis. And the, the Johnson County Commissioners added, where's his name?
Mark Reynolds.
Mark Reynolds.
He's the third one down.
There it is. And that's their seat to appoint, so we're just agreeing to accept their person. And then we're adding Drew Lewis on that one.
Move to approve the TIF Commission slate as presented?
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes. All right, on the Arts Commission, we had several people submit for that. After looking at all the applications and stuff, I felt that these three people were probably the most involved and most qualified. It's gonna be Aaron Sin George, Cindy Beckel, and Jay Lenhart. For those three.
I think everybody, everybody got those applications, right?
Yes.
Move to approve the Art Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Rayor. We now will be at quarters.
I've been trying to fix that for a little while for you.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
And for you Apple people, if you know better ways for me to do this, please share it with me later, because.
Just setting the timer? Just setting the timer?
Let's see here, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and our city council. All right, I took care of what I had. Let's see here.
Anybody else got anything from the moment?
City manager report.
I'll keep it brief tonight, appreciate your patience, we've had a lot on the agenda tonight. Next one will probably be almost as long. But I guess the only thing I'll update is that tomorrow, Councilmember Watts and I will be headed to the Missouri League of Municipalities Legislative Conference and participate in that, and hoping to talk to our representatives about some issues facing Warrensburg in its future. And then when I get back from that, I'll be participating with the J C E D C, with the Janet Hady visit during an assessment regarding our industrial and manufacturing sectors, and what makes sense for us to try and improve in the future, what fits with us and what doesn't fit with us, and look forward to their recommendations. And I believe council's been invited to participate in parts of that as well. And I think that's an important assessment for our community that's gonna help us make some important decisions for our future. So I don't have anything else to report at this time.
That is this Wednesday, correct, Cindy? From twelve to one fifteen? That sounds right. I don't have it in front of me, it reads you to pay. Any of the other council members?
I'll be at the breakfast, I'll be at the early one, eight o'clock.
Oh, you're going the early one, not the lunch?
I'm going to the hospital, I have a B C C board meeting at the lunchtime.
Okay, so you're going to the B C C then?
Yes, so I'll be, I'll be at the eighty Advantage thing, eight o'clock in the morning, and then I'll be at Whitman.
And B C C and this are all exactly the same time, so.
I had to cancel that.
Yeah, so two of us are gonna go.
I'm doing the twelve fifteen, one fifteen at Ridgeview. I knew you could go, but you're.
Which one are you, if you're going in, you have one?
I certainly can. Which one would you prefer?
Well, B C C is probably.
You want morning or one afternoon? Both of them are afternoon, right?
Yeah, I mean, twelve to one fifteen might be a little bit easier.
I think it's past the R C P timeline anyway, so I go to the Rice Cafe.
I used to be a public affairs, there's no such thing.
You're right.
Yeah, but the rice thing.
Two of us have canceled, so we should be able to move you into one of those spots.
I'll let J C E D C do tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, but we got both events covered, so that way we're representing both locations. All right, let's see, director of finance report.
Yes, there was a small, well, not small, but there was payment missed in the quarterly financial that was presented last council meeting. Ninety-seven thousand dollars that was in the general fund revenue was actually general, the general obligation bond money, so we moved that out. And I have a brief, another quarterly financial in the pack before you look at. Also, I've broken out general obligation real property revenue. And today, to date, we've made, we've brought in about nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That, that basically will pay our, our first payment on the debt this year. So we're doing pretty good. In the, the year-to-date, revenue over expenses, fifty-three thousand dollars. So we're doing pretty good there as well.
You got anything, Mark? Slim? You got anything?
Well, I do, Friday is the Chinese New Year, and it's the Year of the Dog. And so we're really excited about that.
That's cool.
Really excited about that. On Thursday, late Thursday afternoon, I got an email from a new resident in Warrensburg a year ago, and he wrote an article back for a magazine, and it's in Vietnamese, and I cannot read it, but I will make sure to share it with you. We're, I reached out to him and asked him if we could share it on social media, so we'll be posting that.
Do you need a translator?
Yeah.
I got a ten-year-old who speaks Vietnamese at the gym.
Oh, that'd be great, okay.
She's really cool.
Yeah. That's it.
Daniel?
Just really wanted to highlight the gift of Kenneth and Maria of Glacebrook. It was really generous at the end of last year, they donated some money to us for the use of the community center. So we have to sometimes use that, but we're very thankful for it.
Correct?
Yes, just to kind of keep the council apprised of the compensation and benefits study that you approved last session. Since then, letters have gone out to both the department heads as well as every employee within the city regarding their job descriptions and those types of things. The Wage and Benefit Committee has also met. And Becky Crowder from the Austin Peter Group will be coming to town on the twentieth to meet with that committee. And they will also be on-site, both her and Beth Tarko, interviewing employees on March eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. So that continues to move forward.
All the, all the snow reports are all jacked up, so. They don't know when any snow's coming, so. Nothing? Anything on this side here? Anything? All right, I want to thank everybody for this meeting. I think you went pretty good for the amount of people we had here. Do we have any for closed session? No reason for closed session? All right, let's adjourn.